Barbara, would you leave the sand to Fred?
Sure. Are we waiting for the officers to come up? We'll just go.
No, they're here. He's here. They're here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, call meeting order. Roll call. Tim?
Here.
Julie?
Here.
Troy?
Here.
I'm drawing a blank down here. Are you here?
Yes.
Rod?
Here.
Police officers, are you here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
What's your part?
Janet.
Janet Reeves.
Janet. I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank tonight.
Don't forget Bob.
Okay, approvals. We shouldn't have any bills paid. Don't have any reports. New business, discussion of racing, the town water rates due to joint powers increase. I wasn't here to, on the beginning of that. Is, what, what are, exactly are we raising?
From what I understand, and I could be incorrect on that, the water district is raising the rate that they supply to us by 10%.
We don't get charged for water supplied. We get charged per EDU. And then, of course, we've got our, our bills paying, paying the, uh...
Joint Powers.
Joint Powers to pay the, the loans off. So it's, the only thing I can think is it's 10% on the EDUs, but I, I have no idea. I tried to find it in here, but I couldn't, couldn't find anything. Barbara, you know, what did, what did the town base do with theirs?
You want me to think that far back?
Yeah, it's only been a month.
I know, I haven't listened to it yet, because I listened to you guys instead. Uh, I don't know. Let me look on my agenda from them and see if I have it. I do believe it was per EDU, though. The raise, but I don't, don't hold me to that.
And I looked down our bills. What are we paying for EDUs?
I don't know the EDU part, I know just every month it's 1,866.
Yeah, there's, there's four bills. And I just, just signed one of them today, but it didn't, didn't have anything on the EDUs. There, we're, we're paying for, uh, for an account to build up in case we've got to repair any water lines. We've, a reserve, we've got that one. And three others, but I don't, I don't know which one, which one is what. You had before that we were starting out.
I have to plug one. I think that compared to this one started, it's kind of the same. This is the one we have.
Oh, okay. Just go by. Another. I'm missing for the lines. So right now, we're paying, uh, $449 to land investment loan. We're paying $122 in reserve. 1M is $444. I have no idea what that is. And then the BHR, which is 851. And I have no idea what that is. Big Horn Regional. Oh, that would be Big Horn Rural. 851 would be for that line from the viaduct up to the cemetery and that down. And connecting to that water and our tank, because the, the regional, I think regional paid for that, we've got to pay it back, but I have no idea what just what. So if it's, if, if they're raising this 10%, and it's a 1M, it would be $44.40, but I don't think it's that. Well, if you look at what the audit people said. I didn't, didn't see anything. If you remember what the audit people said, is, is bottom lines, we got to start building a reserve. Right. And we can't build a reserve with what we're currently bringing in, because we still got a lot of past due payments that people not paid. So...
Well, that's just our cost to the landlord, sure. Our hard expenses.
Absolutely. Well, and we had the fire riders to deal with, which comes out of the...
And the leak.
The leak, absolutely. So I was doing a little figure in the other day. And I think, this is just my first opinion, I'm going to throw it out there, but I think that we, eight would be our minimum, but we've got to raise it across the board. And I think it would be more like 12 would be more sufficient, but, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna be a hard pill to swallow, eight percent.
Is that a percentage or cents?
What's that?
Is that a percentage or cents?
It's just, just a dollar, dollar figure.
Eight cents or eight dollars?
Eight dollars.
Per EDU.
No, no. This would just be a flat rate.
Oh, you're flat. Thank you for the blank.
But we have, we have raised water. It, it's been a long time. And legally, we've got to have a reserve account for the water, and we don't have, we have zero in reserve. So if we have leak, we can't fix, we're screwed. And that's it. I believe that's the state requirement, that, uh, you have a reserve to take care of anything that, that happens. So anyhow, I would make a motion open it for discussion to, uh, looking at between eight and 12, uh, straight across the board on our water in Sewerville. Got a motion to open it up for discussion?
One second. I'm looking at last year's totals and seeing how that's comparing.
Well, one, one thing we, we got to remember, and three-quarter inch line is something like 7.85 EDUs. And if I'm not mistaken, we currently pay a dollar an EDU. But we've got, uh, we've got about 10 or 12 people that's not paying. If they don't pay, we still pay the EDUs. We cannot drop them. So, so that's by each that, that we've got to look at too. That their EDUs are going to go up, and we're still going to have to pay them.
So the ones that need...
We've got to raise enough to, to pay for all of these taps that are not being used, and for people not using water. So we're still paying EDUs on Sandy Love's, Mont Richter's, Mont Benel's? And anybody's water that's been shut off. Any... There's, there's something like eight or nine of them that we're paying EDUs on. And the only way we can stop that is stick the tap up, plug it. But then, Joint Powers threatened that they would raise the price of an EDU to, to make up for that, so... Well, it's gonna cost a lot of money to Well, it is. those taps and plug them.
Plus, they also told us we need to start putting late fees onto the bills if they're not paid by a certain date that we haven't been doing and we're supposed to be doing. Right?
Yes, we were told by... And in the, the ordinance, it says the 20th of the month.
Right, okay.
And does it, does it give the amount that...
No.
A percentage?
We have to determine what it is.
Would you do a late fee like you'd do a, a bad check fee? I would. Most, most of them are a percentage like 2.5%. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Some, some people go with the flat rate. And I don't know what's, what's legal rate now. It's 3% or... I have no idea on that. So Julie, is this where we're at right now? On total, uh, water expenses?
Um, just a little bit of the expenses. Um, looking at last fiscal year, our income from water and sewer was 129,744. But then, we paid Joint Powers, uh, 22,392. We have the sewer loan that was approximately 20, 18,000 or 20,000. And then I'm looking at the, all the little expenses through here. For water operators, or repairs. All of that. And that, that's adding up.
We actually, uh, billed out 129,744 dollars last year. I don't believe it's.
Well?
But the, average, average bill, say at a hundred dollars with 50 taps is 50,000 dollars.
This is, yeah, this is last fiscal year.
You get 22, 23.
I know. Last fiscal year. This is this year's date? This fiscal year date was the last fiscal year.
It's just easy math, it, it doesn't come out.
Well, I can go through and see if somebody booked something wrong, but I show the one income, they've got the water separate out between the water flat rate amount and then the pre-usage amount, so one of them comes to 45,029,34. The sewer, 41,974. And the other water, I think this, I think this bottom one is the, um, per usage rig. That was 42,740. That's from July 2022 to June 2023.
If that's what it says, I can argue with it, but it's... Well, it's got to be something, something anywhere there, because even if you do 120 dollars on an average of 50 taps, you're at 72,000. So you know we had some deals, you guys have been working on some of those problems going on.
But, yeah, so this, this fiscal year to, to start with, we've got what, 14.6, 27.1, and 13.1 for water, water use, water caps, and, and sewer.
41, that'd be 47, and we've only got what, March, April, May? June, four months left, so I'm saying that we're gonna be, that it probably should be closer to 60 to 70,000. Because if we've done that, 129,740 divided by 50 taps divided by, equals divided by 12. That'd be 216 on the lot in average bills. Yeah. Yeah.
I wonder if some of this is because she had bills that got wrote off?
It's possible.
So we can scrap that one, just look at this year to date then?
Yeah, I think that that's gonna be better, because you probably got some knowledge of your line terms, I would guess, not you, where, where it came from.
So looking at this year to date?
Right. So this year to date, we're at 47.8. So let's take that and let's see where...
Plus this one here. Water shows, this, this too.
So, we're looking at this, this...
And that.
And that.
That's 70.
So see, that, I'm, I'm gonna get this, this two more, yeah. Because we've got, uh, we've got March, April, May, and June, so there's four, so this will represent eight months. Divide that by eight months equals, divide that by 50 taps equals, so we're still at 176 dollars.
We only have 50 taps, though.
I don't even know that we'll get 50 to actually.
But then you've got some places, like, um, the businesses that pay more.
Right.
You'd think they've got the higher business rate. Like Calibine, Highway Bar.
But then some of them taps just split pay the bare minimum. The 91 a month.
Yeah, the 91 a month, 91.50.
Anyway, those numbers, I just, I don't know where, how we're getting those, uh, busy water book.
Yeah, it's on the desk. Looking at average late fees, they said if you don't want to go with a flat rate, most, most places they become 1% and 2% monthly. Or they choose a flat rate.
Maybe a flat rate would be the easiest. That way you're not calculating.
Just link it on there and...
Play it on, it's, it's it's like auditor said, we could use that flat rate to start our, uh, account for rates and, and stuff like that. And then, then raise the water for strictly, to, to help our budget. Because I don't, I really can't, I don't know how we're coming out this year.
Yeah, there's been a lot of fees. And we're starting to have to pay more for pace, for sewer.
Yeah.
The, the testing has gone up a little bit, I've noticed. So some, it looks like sometimes they, they test the lagoon and they'll test it twice, and sometimes they won't test it for another two weeks, and then they hit it twice, and I'm sure it has to do with what the first reading is, why they did the second reading, but still.
Probably.
Those labs really add up.
Oh, yeah. Well, we tried to figure out how we could take our own samples and run them to Billings or Casper. But we would have to get two or three towns together and do them all at once, and have somebody just take them to Casper and drop them off, or Billings or wherever, whatever lab you wanted to use. But we couldn't get anybody to go with us, so... We've got 57 active taps. We have got seven taps that we're paying EDUs on that, uh, the ones that have left the country or whatever. So we're getting paid on 57 accounts.
Now, now...
Tim, let me ask you, does that include the ones like me that I pay 91.50 on and non-active?
Okay, because that's less than what my water bill is.
Then does that include the school property?
Yeah, because he'll be moving in.
That doesn't include school property.
Well, because that'll be a new...
Because we, we don't have an active temp over there.
There's no cap?
But they still charge us. I mean, they count them.
Yeah, no, yeah, we're still being charged, yeah.
We're still being, we're still being charged.
So there's a A there.
Yeah.
Well, now, on EDUs, no, we're not being charged there. Oh, because they dug up the... They dug it up, they shut it off. I believe they made, and it's been long ago since they set this up, but I believe they made exemptions for churches and schools on not paying EDUs. Fire holes. And fire holes. But they could have changed that, you know, Troy, you can. I have been one of their meetings for 10 years. No, as far as, uh, no, I have, that has not changed, yeah. Well, I think as far as the, the late charges, I think you've got to make it stiff enough to make believers out of them to make them pay their bill on time.
I agree.
Number one. So I don't like the percentage idea.
I like the flat rate.
So how much do you want to make the flat rate?
Hundred bucks. No, I gotta get mine in, yeah. I think five dollars would be a good round figure. I know, I know I'm probably going the way you go, but it's, it would be easier to raise it later than lower it later. So I think if we get our feet flat, see where we're going, you know, we're, we're all going to take rashness ship the way it is. So let's make it a small pile instead of a big pile. Well, why don't we do this tonight? Because Julie, I think you've got a little bit of work to do to see what's going on here. So what, my recommendation would be to, to, because we're gonna do a first, first reading on this tonight, so we've got to have three readings, correct?
We've got a whole lot more to do than that.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just talking about, on, on the water. What we're talking about right now, the late fee and, uh, late raise, because once you go through this, and if you find that there's some massive corrections, got to be made, it'll give us a better insight of where we really need to go. But if we, and we can always change that in our second reading or our third reading, so you know, I'd recommend we go ahead and make a motion to, uh, I, what I would do is, I would make a motion to do a late fee of five dollars and to do a rate increase of eight dollars on the bills. And then if we need to change that, we can change it in the next two readings.
I think I'd start out at 10. I mean, either they get it in here or they don't.
You're talking on the...
On that late fee.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, the five dollars is nothing to anybody anymore, and if you don't start out, people are, you gotta, just, we gotta get hard on this, is the way I look at it. It's been let go, and let go, and let go, and then we're behind.
Yep, I agree.
I mean, that's my opinion. It's whatever anybody else thinks.
Well, I would change that motion then. I think that'd be approved, so, but I'd change that motion for a $10 late fill in with an $8 increase in water rates. Well, you, you you gotta divide the water rates up, you going to go $4 sewer or $4 water? Or you going to put it all on water? I don't think...
Yeah, it's gonna be on water ends, because if it, water, sewer, both need something.
Okay, I'll, I'll rephrase my motion again.
I made your motion.
And then, and then is it, is it just, is it on the, because we've got the flat rate part, and then we've got the usage part, so it's not gonna be on the usage, it's only gonna be on the flat rate.
And it would have to be on the flat rate. So I would rephrase that motion. The motion would read that I make a motion to go ahead and raise the water bill, the water bill by $4, the sewer bill by $4. And to put a $10 late fee on late payments.
So...
Yes.
I just, I had the ordinance book because of what I want to talk about regarding the court later. So here it says, uh, penalty, a graduated penalty will be added to all delinquent assessments of water runs. Said penalties to be determined by the town council at its annual budget meeting.
Exactly. We can, we can either...
We can, we can either do it at a budget meeting, which takes three readings. Or we can do it in the form of an ordinance in three readings. If I'm not mistaken. That's the way they always told me how.
Yeah, it says on all those ordinances, on any of the fines in that ordinance book, it says to be determined during the budget session. How are you reading it to read, Janet?
I read this that says that there's no other provision for chain, for setting delinquent. Fees, other than to do it at the budget meeting. It doesn't, if it, if you could do it by ordinance, then it would say that, right?
Yes.
But it doesn't say that.
But this, this is.
To be determined by the town council at its annual budget meeting.
Right, so we're gonna have three readings on that.
Uh huh.
So this is our first budget meeting. So we would do our first reading tonight, and then our other two readings in the next two budget meetings. Our however many times it takes us to get to a second or a third reading. Does that make sense?
Of the budget?
Yeah.
So you guys are gonna do a first reading of the whole budget tonight?
No, we ain't.
So, yeah. So there, there you have it. I would say, you know, you get, I would say you can. Have the discussion and put it in the minutes that there's, uh, that, um. When, when you are preparing a budget, that this is what you want to include. And have that, and you can have that as a motion.
Right.
So that you all vote on, but.
You know, in, in the meantime, I'm going to ask the clerk of Powell. And the clerk in Grable. Because unless they changed it drastically, you could do it in the form. Of an ordinance, it doesn't necessarily have to be. Through the budget session. But I will ask the gal in Grable. And I will ask the gal in Powell.
Well, it would be nice to get some guidance on it.
We, well, we need guidance, I don't want to go the wrong way and then get in trouble over it. And I, you know, I don't know that. I don't know that our attorney could really give us the answer that quick.
According to the town of Basin, it is per EDU.
Per EDU, yeah.
Correct.
That's kind of what I figured.
So I think where we're standing on this tonight is, because we're not gonna do a full reading of the first reading of the budget, because we're not gonna get that far tonight. We discussed this, let Julie go through what she's gotta do and see where we're at with the entries and things.
Yeah, with everything.
And let Rod get a hold of a couple of clerks that they're in the know on this and find out the, the correct way that we need that.
So we can postpone this then?
Uh, what I would do is we would just table what we discussed on the, we'll put it in the minutes. But table it for now until we get the. Correct numbers and the correct answers on. Whether it can be done through an ordinance, whether it can be done through a budget.
Does everybody agree on the rates we're talking about?
I do today.
Troy?
I think it's fair.
Julie? Okay, I just, just want to make sure that if, if somebody didn't think it was fair, then. You know, we can sit here and go, we can come up with something we figure that is fair. Or come back to the next meeting. With, with what we figure is right, but. We've, we've gotta make it right now, if we can't do it in the future, so, yes.
I'm, I'm looking at the actual thing that you guys got about admitting rates and fees, it says. Proposals decrease rates by ten percent. Current rate is eleven fifty per EDU. A ten percent increase would set twelve sixty-five per EDU as the rate, and that came from Joint Powers.
Now, would you?
Sure, the proposal is to increase rates by ten percent. Current rate is eleven fifty per EDU. A ten percent increase would set twelve sixty-five per EDU as the rate.
One twelve sixty-five per EDU?
Twelve sixty-five.
Twelve dollars and sixty-five cents per EDU. The gallon change would remain at one point oh five per each thousand gallons or fraction thereof per month, as they were required by the board.
So, so what is their base rate?
What is their what?
Base rate.
The current rate is eleven fifty per EDU.
So, so they're billing out just by EDUs?
It says the gallon exchange would remain one point five per thousand gallons.
Because what we were. Years ago, we, when they started doing the EDUs, an EDU doesn't make sense to me. It's an estimated dwelling unit. It's, it's a number that they put on a three-quarter inch line, a one-inch line, and an inch and a half line. That they charge it for, and it. And don't quote me on this, but it, the. Three-quarter inch line, to me, it seems like was seven cent or eight cent in EDUs. And it seems like we charged a dollar an EDU. And, and that was way back when, when they first started charging it. So we would be like eight sixty-five on the EDUs, plus the, the base, plus the usage.
So, do you have any clue what we're charging per EDU now, what we're, what?
It used to. It used to be on the bills.
It is, it doesn't say.
It doesn't have to be charged.
We charge according to the tap size.
M, N. Yeah.
M, N.
Michael, Matthew, Tom.
I don't remember what's, what, you know, which one, what the half, half inch was and what the three-quarters was.
Yeah, I, I think that's on, that's the base charge. There's an EDU on top of it, I don't know what they did with it, where they hid it or where they put it.
That'll work. I don't think it says EDU.
I don't think it says.
Not a lot more, but.
Right.
It just, they just have the tap size, that's all they have. On the cards.
Yeah.
Do you want to ask Dennis? If, if that's going on the EDUs and, and ask him for sure what a one-inch EDU is?
Well, Burger just.
Three-quarter inch. Yeah, but that's, that's what Basin does.
No, that was from the Joint Powers directly.
Oh, that's Joint Powers.
They're, they're going to go up to twelve.
Sixty-five per EDU. Correct, and I emailed that to you guys, so you never heard of it.
Cause that would, that would be more than a ten percent raise.
No, no, if you're going from eleven fifty to twelve sixty-five, it's, it's right out of ten percent raise.
Well, yeah, but I don't know what we've been charged now for the EDU. They've been.
That's what we're billed from Joint Powers, right now is eleven fifty. Per EDU, and it's one point five EDUs per thousand gallons.
I can show it to you on a bigger screen if you need it.
This is, this is for the silver this year. Also, but the expenses for.
Well, according to this, it's saying we're being charged a dollar five per thousand, right now.
And it says it'll change, it won't change, that will remain at a dollar five per thousand gallons or a fraction thereof per month.
They, they, they've really, really changed that. So if we're getting charged. A dollar five thousand, we're not even making that, what do we charge?
Dollars, just, just figure five thousand. Five thousand, there are sixty taps, that's a hundred and sixty times. Let's just use a hundred, that's sixty thousand. So we're, we're.
We're right on it, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're in the hole, we're gonna be in the hole this time.
Barely keeping an eye on, at above water.
Yeah. In other words, what we're talking about over here is, right now, if this number is right on the twenty-three, twenty-four to current. It's seventy thousand, four hundred and five dollars.
Income.
Income. We currently, and we've got four months to go yet, we're currently.
That's sixty-six thousand, two hundred expenses.
So if we even break even on it this year, it's gonna be a miracle. And we have a more water line, like we definitely will.
Well, then we've gotta break even because we can't.
It's gotta be self-sustaining.
Yeah.
Well, let's go ahead and, uh.
So Julie's gonna work on this, she's gonna get ahold of the clerk, so when we hold our first real budget meeting. Then we'll have the answers on this.
Yeah. And the gal in Powell will give me everything that, that we need on that.
Moving on.
Moving on, we need to open a bank account for court, for the free, um. Auditors.
Can I ask a couple of questions on that? We've already got a police account, right?
Right.
We've already got a general account.
Yep.
We've already got an investment. So why can't we just move the money on the police account into the general account? Then move the expenses back to the police department's account for that month, because that's what we gotta do, right? Is we gotta put the expenses in, if the expenses in the police department go over that, then we gotta have why it went over that.
No, so, actually, I talked to Jerry this, this morning, and I'm gonna talk to the judge tomorrow when we have court. So the reason is, it has to do with state statutes and Supreme Court rules that govern municipal courts. And so, um, there's a couple of things, first of all, I need to print it out, but, um. So. It was fine when there was one person that had, that was court clerk and the town clerk. Because that, that meant that the court money was getting deposited, was getting turned over to the town every day, every day, every time. But that's not happening now, and because of the spottiness of, of the court clerk or the town clerk, it really doesn't happen. So, so there's that, but there's also, um. Where was it? So here it says, uh, this is from the, the bench book, which is from the Supreme Court. So already received by the judge, this is from municipal courts. By the judge is to be deposited daily into an account labeled special criminal account, or the court, the court account, in an officially designated bank. Also, let's see where. There's something else that we need to, that we need to address with that, but. So. The bottom line is, is that the judge, the judge, and I, I have a, um. I was gonna go ahead today and talk to the court clerk down the board line, but I moved it to next week because I feel like rather than snow up today. And I'm gonna call the court clerk in Grable, who I've talked to before about that. And then the auditor suggested talking to the court clerk in Fort Laramie because they, they've been through an audit, and I looked at their audit. And they had some of the similar, some similar findings with them, but. The deal is, is that having a court account. Means the money that comes in to the court gets deposited into that account, I deposit that money as clerk of court. Into that account, and then, at the end of each month. We prepare a statement about what, all the money that came in. And that all that money then has to be transferred into the town's general fund. So it needs to zero out.
Then we've got, then we've got to earmark that back to operating expenses for the police department.
And that's up to you guys, what happens after that. As far as the court's concerned, the court has to have an account that, that I account for, that the judge supervises. So my proposal to the judge tomorrow is gonna be, we open this account. I keep track of it, and then every month, probably during court, I have a, a, just a statement for her to sign, this is what, um. What Grable does, is, that I saw, I need to get more details about what she does, but there's a, an accounting that the judge signs. And then I would propose actually backing that up, that statement, so here's, here's the income, here's what came in for cash, here's what came in for checks, here's what came in for the direct deposits. Are the online deposits. And here is the amount that we transferred out to the, to the town's general fund. We can do all that online, and then have, as accompaniment to that, have that bank, the bank statement that shows the money coming in and the money going out, and at the end of the month, there's a zero balance.
Makes sense?
And then that statement gets signed by the judge.
Makes sense to me, yeah. That way you got, it's kind of a double accounting system there, in a way, in a way.
And then all of the, um, that would, that would also apply to the community fund. The deferral lines, and so Jerry explained to me that, he was like, things kind of take on a, a, a life of their own. So the first few things that came in. That were not quite deferrals when he first started, was people who he wanted, you know, he said, well, if you want to make a donation to the town, you can do that. So those were actually donations to the town, they were not checks or money orders payable to Madison Municipal Court, which is how the deferrals work now. And so that money actually does get to, should be accounted for separately, and, and it's easy to account for it separately, and it's easy to keep it, you know, have, have. Here's the fines and forfeitures, here's the, the deferral income, and then, but at the end of the month, again, all that gets transferred to the town, and then it's up to you guys, what happens to it after that.
Right.
Does that make sense?
That makes very much sense.
So I don't, I don't think it's hard. The other thing that, that, that you guys need to do though is, and Jerry, they, or not Jerry, BJ thought you guys had done it, but I think you probably want to do it like every. Every year when a new one comes out, is adopt the bond schedule. So like I said in the, um, my report at the council meeting, we've been charging twenty dollars for court costs, but legally we can only charge ten. And just so you guys know, this is all coming as a huge surprise to me, because I thought, I had been told everything, this was all the way it was done, and like that. So I am gonna be questioning everything to do with the court. And citation income from now on, because, and based on, and doing, you know, insisting that things be done based on. Uh, the Supreme Court rules and the state statutes, because, um, and looking it up myself. Because, um, and looking it up myself instead of having somebody say, oh, yeah, this is how it is. So, uh, court costs, I think we're okay with the court costs. What the auditor said was that, uh, and I knew this already, overpayments of, um, ten dollars for the last don't need to be refunded. So, and technically, they're not overpayments because, uh, because we're using the bond schedule, but we're just, we've just been reporting it to the state as twenty dollar court costs. So, so that's a conversation I'm gonna have with Michelle tomorrow morning, is what she thinks should happen to that, that other ten dollars that we've been collecting for the last three, four years. As far as the auditor, the auditors didn't seem to think it was.
Maybe the police department oughta pay a ten dollar per tick of water bill down.
No, so here's the thing, so there is a bond schedule. The bond schedule, um, is for circuit courts. They charge twenty dollars for court costs. They can charge municipal courts, or can only charge ten dollars. So if, I think, and I think, I don't know if it needs to be by ordinance, or if it needs to just be by the motion of, you know, by motion to adopt the bond schedule from the Supreme Court. And once we do that, then that bond schedule, then it's, then it's clear, it's like, this is how much it is. For example, speeding forty into thirty is a hundred and fifty dollar fine, uh, less ten dollars for using a seatbelt. And then ten dollars of that is court costs.
I thought we adopted a bond schedule last year.
I don't think you did it last year.
Was this our budget meeting? Ours, yeah, yes.
BJ thought, BJ remembered you guys doing it back when he first started.
Yeah, 'cause I can remember, I remember us doing it every year, years ago, but it's been a long years. So what, Janet, just quick clarifying this, um, so the way that you were told, prior to us getting here, that it was twenty dollars per ticket, is what the police department needed to pay back to the town.
Well, the town needed to account for that money somehow, that money goes back to, you know, cover the costs of the court.
Okay, so let me ask you this question.
And that's up to, whatever.
So, just, just in looking at, uh, let me look here real quick, and then I'll speak this out.
So we have to make sure that we're covering our court costs.
Well, that's, that's it.
Um, yeah, so, um, the judge charges us three hundred dollars each time. Jerry charges for every phone call, every email, every little thing. And so last, this year so far for Jerry, this fiscal year, we've paid twenty-one thousand sixty. Because in the summertime, when he's got, you know, everybody and their brother calling him up, some of his bills are, you know, thirty-five hundred dollars.
Well, yeah.
And a lot of those are deferrals.
Yeah.
So I guess, my, she's already added it up there, and that's not all of it there, I'm unsure.
That's just, that's his travel fees and court costs, attorney fees.
So, so how many, what, what, you, you, I know you've got it, 'cause you gave it to us these meetings, I don't have it here, but how many tickets total did we write last year?
Oh. Was that, was that right?
While you're finding it, try and just take a quick break. Go ahead, take a break. I'm sorry, I should've asked you.
Because at one point, it was taking out more than it was.
Like if you got two back pages, and you could fill it or just add, you could put up there.
Oh, my God. It cost us a whole page and then. Maybe we could do it again now, when it's not so rough again. We can all, each, that we don't get a dime for, right? It's not cost-effective, it's.
It's the court cost, and all that, the only difference that makes is when I put it in my Excel sheet, and when I send it to Cheyenne, and I write, oh, my, the court costs, and I've changed it.
Yeah. He texted me the account, and picture of him working a phone, he's in the construction, he hit his head there. Make a log there. And I said, oh, wow. And I'm writing it all down, which I'm gonna talk to Tuesday, Thursday.
A lot of money.
At four forty hard times, so. Tell me how to do it, we can, let's just drink a drink. Okay, hi, make sure, I didn't send anything. Edit something, you know, some, some, but it. And then he happened, and he sent a eight over, which is what I was saying, I would be more of it. And then there were airphones.
Two thousand six hundred.
So he didn't call me Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And I called him on Sunday.
Two thousand four hundred ninety-six.
And then I texted him on Monday. And again, and about twenty minutes after that.
Julie, this is our mosquito bees, mosquito bees, that's all.
Just like the fourth thing down, there's mosquito revenue, it was five ninety-six, and then cost, whatever.
Well, just for salary, we got eight calls, two out of the.
Yeah. Yeah, we use network stuff, I was, I was just curious if. I'm glad we have all separated now.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go painting back for.
How many tickets do you figure we wrote there?
He knows.
Tell you exact, I'm gonna go out figure, I can tell you the exact.
Exactly.
Two thousand six hundred and fifty, that's for calendar year twenty twenty-three. Um, two thousand four hundred and ninety-six of those were paid. Um, that, you know, were, uh, what do you call it?
How many were paid?
Row tiers. Ninety-three were deferrals, and then there were fifty-eight that were suspended.
Two thousand four hundred ninety-six paid.
Uh-huh. So, yeah.
Paid. So, in all reality, that ain't even gonna cover our court costs, it's ten bucks, it's ten. So, let me ask this question to the police department.
Well, but twenty-eight, twenty, so twenty-eight thousand eight fifty of those deferral payments.
Twenty-eight thousand in deferrals?
Twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty.
So, um.
And some of that, some of the charge that Jerry had last year were not, unless your figures is broken out, I mean, some of that is for court, and some of that goes for the town.
Yeah, I think you did it broke out, don't you? 'Cause I see you count in police.
It's page three, well, I've got court attorney fees, and I've got court attorney travel fees.
Okay, and then we should have one in here, 'cause I seen a little bit of.
Municipal judge.
Then we should have something for, for, um, town stuff.
Oh, town, oh, town, yeah, that, that is counted differently.
I see it here somewhere.
There, it is in here somewhere. Legal fees.
There it is, attorney's fees.
Paid for legal fees.
So, yeah, it's broke out, Janet.
Okay.
Both are separate. So we paid twenty-eight hundred and forty dollars so far. Uh, attorney's fees for the, no, we paid twelve thousand twenty.
Twelve thousand twenty for the attorney fees, and then attorney travel fees is twenty-eight forty.
Why are we paying so much out of there? Well, he was coming.
He comes from the mop, doesn't he?
Well, yeah, he hasn't been to any of ours.
Oh, that's not.
So this is part of the last groups.
No, this is your, this is, yeah, this is last year, sorry.
Yeah. So, but the deferrals go to the so-called community fund, correct?
That, right now, yes.
Good.
But I'm not sure that's really correct. Proper procedure. In other words, the reason is because those payments are made payable to Madison Municipal Court, so that this money becomes to the court. So what I would say is, that money goes into the court account, the new court bank account gets deposited, keeps account, accounted for separately, uh, and then, but then at the end of the month, it all gets transferred to the town, and then the town.
Puts that in whatever.
Does whatever you want, you know, you do whatever you want with it.
So, another question. I'm kinda the judge, or the, the attorneys in the Fannie Willis case today, another question. So when we adopt the bond schedule, the bond schedule is, is generally written by the state, correct?
It's from the Supreme Court.
Supreme Court, it's state law.
Yes. So, right, it says, here's what the bench book says, and this is based on, uh, the Supreme Court rules. Rule three point one, blah, 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 applies to circuit and district courts, and does not specifically address issues for municipal courts. Municipal courts are encouraged, but not ordered, to follow the uniform bond schedule. Therefore, it is recommended that the municipal courts adopt those portions of the land of Supreme Court's uniform bond schedule where they may apply, unless local circumstances justify their ins. So I think, you know, I think that just saying, you know, we don't wanna go to all that trouble, plus it just, I don't know, it just create a whole.
Oh, I was just trying to think of a way to, if, if we go from twenty to ten, how we could, could make that up.
We can, we.
Well, it all goes in the same pot, there's no.
Oh, we don't have to.
You can do whatever you want with that money, it's not, that's, my understanding is that twenty dollars is not, it's not, it's not a restricted, it's not restricted funds, like, it's not like the enterprise funds, where water bills have to be used. It's, it's court costs that, it's.
So in other words, in other words, we can leave it at twenty bucks, we don't have to make it.
No, no.
No.
We, no. It's that, it says we have to, it, we're limited to ten dollars.
We, you, you guys are talking two different things. You're, you're talking court costs, you're talking per ticket. What he's saying, we wanna leave the twenty dollars per ticket.
No, we can't.
That, that we get, that the court pays us, we, we can set our own fee there, we can take any amount of money out of that account we want, so we can leave that twenty dollars there.
No, you can't. What I'm proposing is that, and this is what, from the auditors, and this is from reaming the rules. The money that the court gets, comes, takes in, goes into a court account, that the judge oversees, and I account for.
Right.
All those money, at the end of every single month, all that money, one hundred percent of that money, gets transferred to the town's general fund. After that, you can do whatever you want. In my opinion, you probably can't, but, but, you know, you can transfer, you can transfer whatever to the community fund, you can transfer, there's no separate accounting for, for court costs, but I understand, there's not a, you know, it's not like you have a separate, it's not like the enterprise account. So there's no, the money's not gonna go down, money is gonna stay exactly the same. The only difference is, is that in my Excel spreadsheet, instead of writing twenty dollars for court costs, I'm gonna write ten dollars. But when they write the tickets, the, the amount is gonna be the same because you're adopting that bond schedule.
Gotcha, so basically, if I'm right here, once that money's transferred into the general account, that money is literally town funds.
It's the town's money.
So, at that point, then what we can do is, is we can take the other ten back out of there to cover the court costs, and put it into a, to an account for court costs.
Well, yeah, basically.
Court costs.
So, yeah, okay, we're good.
But that's internal accounting, that's what I'm gonna add.
Right.
But the say, but, like, so the bond schedule says, the fine for speeding forty into thirty is a hundred and fifty dollars, less ten dollars if they're wearing a seatbelt, that's the rule, so it's a hundred and forty dollars. So the only difference is gonna be, the fine is gonna be a hundred and forty dollars if you adopt that bond schedule. And the only difference is gonna be, when I record it in my, in my.
Journal.
Journal, it's ten dollars instead of twenty, and when I send it to Cheyenne, on the back of the citation, on the court record piece, where I write down, you know, whatever, but the fine and any, any fees that they pay to the credit company, and the court costs, instead of writing twenty, I'll write ten.
Gotcha.
But the total amount is gonna stay the same.
Gotcha. Real simple. I made a confusion.
So you need to adopt the bond schedule, and you need to approve opening that, okay.
Okay, we got that horse killed, let's move on. Let's, let's go to old business, approval of WHAM conference delegates attending. Now, we, we done this before, we'll do it again. Julie, you wanna go to WHAM? Tim?
I wanna go to WHAM, yes, I'm gonna destroy.
I don't have time to take off.
Judy?
No.
Me? No. So, do I have a motion to send Tim to the WHAM conference for the winter twenty twenty-four?
I make a motion to send him to the winter twenty twenty-four WHAM conference.
Can I ask you a question first? Do we have to allocate whatever for them to spend when they go there, do we have to go through any procedure for that?
There's already a second for being, oh, okay, I didn't know what, okay, yeah, all right.
So I have the motion, do I have the second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm standing.
Motion carries. Uh, some of this stuff we were talking about tonight, you can talk to some of the people down at WHAM and find a little bit of, of, get some answers on, on what other towns doing, what the legislature says. So now, we, we've got on this other agenda, are we going to talk tonight about purchasing the C citation system and how it. are we going to talk tonight about purchasing the C citation system and how it translates?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Do, do we need a motion to adopt the bond schedule?
Uh, we can't do that tonight, it'll have to be at our next meeting.
Oh, okay.
We can't change the agenda on a special meeting.
Oh, okay.
But that will be done next meeting.
Okay.
So were we going to discuss the C citation tonight?
Uh, I think we decided that we was gonna do that at the next meeting, and we was gonna take time to, to study it. Janet, uh, do you have a copy, or do you have a copy of the police budget that you could give to all the council members, last year's?
I don't know if we'll find it.
Okay.
I have, yeah, I've got it someplace.
It's gonna be in there, but yeah.
Is that what really is?
So we'll probably have a decision on that next meeting when we can study it.
Just so you guys know, it's gonna push things back, and the reason is because I'm gonna be out for at least two weeks after the next council meeting. So, and then we're sort of getting into the busy time.
Yeah.
So is there any need for an executive session?
No.
Nope.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Tell everybody. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next regular meeting, it's the second Tuesday of March.